... being asked multiple times, no evidence was presented to the investigator by the claimant on this matter either. Four, claims of unsafe sanitation trucks. The age and condition of sanitation trucks vary, however, they are under constant scrutiny by multiple regulating agencies such as OSHA and the NJ Department of Environmental Protection, and have passed and continue to pass related instructions. The investigation has found no evidence of unsafe equipment. In fact, the city strives to deploy five sanitation trucks on each trash collection day from a fleet of seven. The older ones may lack air conditioning, but the newer ones are air conditioning equipped. Two new sanitation trucks have been on order since the start of the COVID-19 pandemic, and as a result of supply chain issues, the sanitation trucks will likely be delivered by the close of 2022. Accordingly, the city took action to retrofit older trash trucks with air conditioning units, and the maintenance and repair of current air conditioning units is ongoing. When the two new trucks arrive and are deployed, the city will have six sanitation trucks in its fleet with working air conditioning, and older trucks have been fitted with plans in a cab. Policy dictates it is the responsibility of the sanitation driver to inspect each vehicle before heading out on a red. If there is anything wrong with the vehicle, the driver is instructed to complete a vehicle repair request so that proper action can be taken. Five, claims of inadequate fiscal conditions at DFW facilities. There were some merit regarding these claims. As soon as the city was informed of these matters, it took action to improve the facilities, including adding additional security lighting, installation of new water coolers and fountains, updating employee break rooms, bathrooms and changing facilities, and the installation of air conditioning in these spaces. Six, claims centered on current terms and conditions of employment, including salary, wages, and benefit time. As I have in fact listed and repeatedly, the claims brought forth were above and beyond and outside the scope of the union contract. And again, I have addressed this issue numerous times. If you feel that there has been a breach of any current contract terms, there is a mechanism in place in the form of a grievance process that MEA members have at their disposal. In closing, the city will investigate all allegations of harassment and/or discrimination in the workplace, inclusive of supportive evidence. Further, the city will not retaliate against any employee who brings forth such claims. The council has thoroughly reviewed the investigative work of the third-party law firm and is satisfied with their findings based on the interviews and evidence provided in support of the findings, and unless there was any new evidence brought forward, the council now considers this matter closed. Now we have ordinance for discussion on second reading. One, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10.12, Traffic Control Regulation, Section 10.12.160, Schedule 18. Right turn on red light prohibitive for Paul Robeson Boulevard. At this time, I'll open the floor up to the public. You have five minutes, one time up. Please state your name and address when you address the council.
Hi, yes, Daniel Moore Somerset Street. Will you please tell me what intersection?
This is? Mr. Valenti?
Stan Burke, city engineer, standing in for Mr. Valenti. It's at the intersection of Paul Robeson, Sanford, and George. So it's a traffic light intersection, which is currently scheduled just for a further identification for upgrading under a contract that was recently approved by council.
Well, Mr. Moore, I'm very disappointed. Honestly, I would say maybe I should stop thanking people so, so, so much, thinking that they're doing a good job due to where what? This was already approved, when I thanked Mr. Valenti and Sergeant Abode, when it went through city council already, and like I said, it's been over a month ago that it was approved already, and wow, I still go past there and don't see the turn, and now I'm seeing, wow. Please tell me, why does it have to go through again if it was approved already?
This was not before the council before, except on first reading, and you would have heard it before on first reading, and now it's coming before us for second reading. This is how the approval process works.
It's adding the George's, George's Road to Paul Robeson, which was not there before.
You're going to see quite, you're going to see some more of these right turn on red prohibitions come through, and I think I've explained that too.
Why, what, excuse me, I'm not sure what the gentleman's name says, due to where, so you're telling me over a month ago, when I spoke up here, because I, and to see where you're saying it was first reading, you're, the public's not allowed to speak on first reading, so how would I be able to speak on something first reading where, wow, I know good and well, it was second reading where I came up here and I, I thanked Mr. Tom Valenti and Sergeant Abode for the, for the traffic, the same thing that the gentleman just said, that's where, what?
So this particular intersection was not on for second reading for an ordinance yet. Are you against it or for it? I'm not sure where your argument is here.
No, I'm against you keep saying that this did not go through already. Do, wow, if I had the time, wow, to get the video to show, to show you that it went through already.
Okay.
And, but, but no, that's what I'm against with you, like, like I'm trying to make a lie. First you say, ooh, I spoke on the first reading, you're not allowed to spoke on first reading?
I never said you spoke on the first reading. I said you may have seen it on the first reading, I didn't say spoken.
This was over a month ago, and like I said, due to where what? Mr. Valenti, he stood, stood up, and when I said, ooh, ooh, and I thank him and Sergeant Abode, where I was the person that asked for this no turn on red at the traffic authority meeting, and like I said, I'm very disappointed to see that was over a month ago, but what I'm saying is you're against me telling me that this did not go through already?
This did definitely not go through already, and I'm not against you, I'm just telling you the process of order, the way we do our ordinances.
And why, don't you think I know, I, I, I know good and well how, what, as many years as I've been coming, due to where what, against traffic, don't you think I know how to work? Now what, now say I go pull up in the hallway, pull up the video to prove to you right now, what, that, what, to show you, it was second reading, due to where what? Like, it's been over a month ago, and like I said, I still don't see why, due to where you're putting it through, saying it never went through already?
I guarantee you, it was not the same exact location as this, because it would not have come through twice before council. Do you have any objection, or are you for this?
Let me ask Mr. Burke a question. So Burke, may I ask you, when, I think when we first did this, three of the four turns were there, no turn on red.
I believe that's correct. I believe it bears.
George's Road to Paul Robeson, no turn on red, it's allowed, and it's been allowed for a while now. This basically takes care of that.
I believe it takes care of the, the other leg, as you're indicating, that one leg or a couple of legs had, already had the no turn on red. I think they were timed, my recollection, based on the signage, they were time sensitive, seven to seven, or something like that, and, and this makes the rest of the intersection. And again, like I said, this intersection, the, the lighting system and so forth is scheduled for an upgrade in the, under the recently approved Sanford Street contract.
So this is not the same, Ms. Moore?
Well, my question to, to the, to the engineer, due to where, will you please tell me, is this where, what, you're coming off Sanford Street, right, with the car lot, the car lot there, turn, turn, turning to Paul Robeson Boulevard? Coming, coming from, well, either way, from Sanford Street or George's Road, with the, when you're turning right to Paul Robeson Boulevard?
Right, George's Road to Paul Robeson was not included last time. It now will be.
So then, okay, then, thank you for telling me the, the difference where, instead of telling me that what, it did not go through already. Now, okay, the thing that I understand, and I thank you for telling me, explaining the difference, due to where, that you're adding George's Road to it, and like I said, I know it went through, but thank you, Mr. Anderson.
I will just ask Mr. Burke, since it's been a month, a few months already, that there might be previous signs, you know, coming up or something, or just, just to warn people, because they're so used to being turned on, on right, I don't know if you can do that.
When this goes through, there will be signed, additional signage will have to be posted, so, so it makes it enforceable. Advanced warning signs, I think we can work with the police department, see if we can get the renunciator board up there and probably provide indication that, that this change is coming into effect.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. I'll have the next speaker, please. Seeing none?
Move the ordinance, second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council President Secora Ludwig?
Yes. We have nothing on first reading, now we have resolutions one through thirty-four. At this time, I'll open it up to the public. You have one time up, five minutes only. When you approach your microphone, please state your name and address before speaking to the council, and this is on the resolutions only.
Hi, yes, twenty-nine. I want to understand, okay, for us with police extra duty, when you're on these jobs, how many police cars are, are to be on duty?
I think it depends on the activity, Mr. Jones, do you know how many are going to be present at this activity?
I know, I know the, the, the main piece of that is making sure that people can get, get across, Route Eighteen.
Okay, then, everywhere, due to where, is this the permit where now I see you finally put, put it on, and it's for a reason why it was put up there, due to where, is this the time ending seven-thirty, where set up, the breakdown time means what, the people have to be out by seven-thirty?
The festival ends at six, but that extra hour and a half gives the vendors and, and those people, like, say people have tables set up, it gives them the opportunity to break down their stations and be gone.
Then is that the situation? Please tell me, why didn't Lieutenant Hoover tell me, due to where, wow, it, just because it has a permit, that people, when you have entertainment or whatever, I'm not going against this situation, mainly I'm talking about far as with Joyce Kilmer Park, due to where the permit says seven PM, but wow, like I said, how come the officers, what, let them stay in the park till ten-thirty PM, but wow, you give me a ticket for being in park after hours? What, where I was just calling an ambulance for a man? Please tell me, how do people stay in the park afterwards, and you don't give them tickets? And like I said, I have it all on recording. Please, so like I said, wow, is New Brunswick Police Department following the law, or like I said, are you judging people by the color of their skin, or what they can do in New Brunswick, or what? Well, wow, you make sure, what, when you have something over, what, Pine Street Park, wow, you made sure everybody was out after dark, but wow, why would Joyce Kilmer Park, or wow, you had six police cars, no needed, to have six to seven police cars over there just chilling out, doing, doing nothing, where they can be making New Brunswick safer, and like I said, what, if it says to a time, why do you allow people to be there, and the officer, same officer, nine-thirty-nine, that wrote me a ticket, due to where what, he stands there and let people be in there till ten-thirty? Please, tell me, is it racism, or, or, or what? Yeah, you can't give me an answer, but if, if, where Lieutenant Hoover, it's, where I got it recorded, said, wow, it's the city council allowing them to do that. So is that true, that you allowed to do that, or you follow the order, what's on paper?
I don't have any details of the incidents that you are speaking of outside of the resolution that you're supposed to be speaking on now. I don't know what happened in Joyce Kilmer Park, and I.
So just please tell me, is the people, to my, my point, my, is the point, what time you set on here, are the people supposed to be out at the park at, after certain hours?
People that, people that were involved with the festival should be out by then. That doesn't say that other people would meander into the park. I mean, I don't know how even satisfied, or even state who, if they were there for something or not, but this is the parameters for this event.
Well, like I said, on the reason why I'm bringing you involved, due to where Lieutenant Hoover said you allow people, due to where they have a permit with you through the city, that you allow people to stay in the, the park up until ten-thirty. So I can't say whether that's true or not, but believe me, that, that's what he was saying, and like I said, do I, you should know me, do I have plenty of videos, like I said, New Brunswick Police Department is nothing about racism, and you council members support it.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on the resolutions only? Seeing none?
Move the resolutions, second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council President Secora Ludwig?
Yes.
Do any of the council, do you have any experience with that? Councilman Egan?
Thank you, Burke.
Councilman Anderson? Councilman Fleming?
Yes. I'd like to thank the New Brunswick Police Department and all law enforcement agencies who cooperated in finding out about all of these, a lot of shootings that have happened in New Brunswick, especially with the, as we know, it's gangs and drug-related most of the time, and I just want to compliment them on getting together and understanding why sometimes we can't give out information on an ongoing investigation.
I'll now open it up to the public. Please step forward, state your name again and address before approaching the council. A reminder that this is a comment session only, not a question answering session.
Good evening, Madam President, Charles Cradaville. As you know, I'm the editor of the community newspaper, New Brunswick Today, available online at newbrunswicktoday.com, also a resident of the Sedam Street here in the city, and a candidate for mayor of this great city. I'm going to start my remarks by saying rest in peace to Mr. Barry James, who was murdered the morning of Monday, September twelfth, around the corner from my block, and wish all of his loved ones comfort in this difficult time. And I'll note that later that day, there was also a shooting in the area of Joyce Kilmer Park, but for the second time in less than one month, the city government broke its promise to notify the public of shootings that take place in public places. This is unacceptable. I know in that particular incident, this was a public park before one PM, many shots were fired, one of them broke someone's window, and a bullet ended up in their house, an innocent person. I think when things like this happen, the least the city can do is share the information with the public. I shouldn't have to make a request and wait to file, to, to share my information with the public. The city should be doing that, and that's in fact what you've promised to do, so I'd like you to look into why that did not happen, if you could please do that, Madam Council President.
Yes.
Thank you. I'll note, the Franklin Township Police Department's having a public meeting tomorrow, Thursday, their police director will be there to speak about crime and what their police department is doing about it. Can you tell me, when was the last time that New Brunswick's police director had a public meeting like that?
I can, you have to ask him.
Okay, well, he's hard to find, and I think it's also unacceptable that he's not here tonight, especially considering all that's been going on with violence in our streets, and I'll, I'll note that he has not attended one of these meetings in all the time you've been on the council, in a decade or more, and, you know, Franklin, meanwhile, their residents have a meeting specifically about public safety, where they can go to hear the crime statistics, hear what their approach is, and actually ask questions about that stuff, and I think New Brunswick residents deserve just as good as Franklin residents, I'd hope you'd agree, and I'm very curious why they're more transparent than our city, especially considering we have much more violence. I'll note the vice president's absence today, so I'll direct my question to you. Do you think it's appropriate for the Housing Authority Executive Director to have three other jobs leading three other housing authorities, given the tall order he has running New Brunswick's?
I have to look into the details of that, and I will have to stand up for the connection.
Okay, thank you, I, I hope you do. I'll note that the Housing Authority allowed a building to be torn down that provided dozens of units of senior housing, the Hoffman Pavilion, that building came down in 2010, they gave over a million dollars to Penrose Properties to rebuild the building, and you can see for yourself, there's nothing there, more than a decade later, so I don't think Mr. John Clark should be going and getting other jobs until he finishes the job that he started here. I also wanted to ask about the Middlesex County Municipal Joint Insurance Fund and their twenty-seven million dollar deficit. Due to financial mismanagement, New Brunswick taxpayers are now on the hook for nearly five million dollars, thanks to Mr. Drewless's vote in favor of a resolution at their most recent board meeting. Through you, Madam Chair, could Mr. Drewless address why he voted to put the taxpayers on the hook for that huge amount of money?
I can look into the information for you. Mr. Cradaville?
Okay. Any comment on the fine levied against Mr. Goldberg for failing to file a financial disclosure form in relation to his role on that board of the MCMJIF?
This is the first I'm hearing on it, I won't be too bad.
Okay, I, I believe many people associated with that joint insurance fund, the one that's got a twenty-seven million dollar deficit, didn't file financial disclosure forms as they're required to by law every year. I believe upwards of a dozen people were fined, and Mr. Goldberg is one of them, and, yeah, I think the residents of New Brunswick deserve answers to these questions, and I wish that this council would provide answers like you used to back in the day, when people would come up here and we could actually have a dialogue, instead of having to wait a couple weeks and come to a second public meeting just to get the answers. I think you know where I stand on this, it was better when there was a dialogue, and I hope you'll reconsider your decision to, you know, make us wait two weeks just to get answers. There's usually people in the room that have the answers, and, you know, it just makes sense to, to get it out in the open. If we have nothing to hide, we should be talking about the issues right here and now, but I will yield my time, thank you very much.
And I just want to let everybody know, you do have pressing issues, you don't have to wait two weeks to bring them to a council meeting. The administration is at your disposal, you can call them, and you can inquire about these instances, or whatever concerns you have with them. I'll have the next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Ann Swerdloff. I'm the chair of the New Brunswick Environmental Commission, and I'm here to ask you, I sent a letter to you requesting a resolution, that you pass a resolution against the power plant, CPV Power Plant in Woodbridge, two months ago. I came here and I spoke about it about a month ago, I've heard no response. Can you give me a response?
At this time, we're not prepared to act on this.
Is that the response, or is this, you're going to, in the future?
That's, at this time, we're not prepared to act on it.
All right, thank you. Can you give me a reason?
I can formulate it in an email if you'd like, but, you know, this is not a, a public, yes, it's not a public question.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, because the phone calls aren't working, thank you.
Next, please.
Hi, yes, Daniel Moore Somerset Street. I have been a resident in forty-five years, and I, believe me, I am here to speak on too much racism going throughout New Brunswick, and like I said, I do see we have council members who support this racist police department, but like I said, due to where first my son, then my nephew, then me, and then my sister, a, a few days ago, with racism, and like I said, one thing, and I will say from my heart, you mess with the wrong black woman, and I tell you, I will say my prayers that the Lord comes for you racists one by one, and I, am I ashamed to say it, and like I said, now that I see that, wow, the prayers work, because I, like I said, God don't like ugly, every evil eye has their day, wow, just like New Brunswick begging me to press charges on John when he touched me, didn't do anything, why, because he was white, but wow, see, like I said, God don't like ugly, because he can't walk, like I said, that heroin is killing him, he can't walk, and like I said, wow, the same thing with the Board of Education disrespecting me in every way, where wow, seeing at the football game, wow, two of the security guards had attacked me, coming towards me, putting me out, because, just because I couldn't sit down, wow, like I said, God, do I have magical powers, or like I said, God doesn't like ugly, or like I said, due to where, especially I shall say to Chuck O'Donnell.
Before I address you.
Chuck, Chuck O'Donnell and Captain JT Miller, and like I said, due to where nothing but a bunch of racists, like I said, I'm glad the charges was dropped on my, on my nephew, where you ruined a hundred and fifty thousand dollar scholarship for my nephew, for saying that my nephew was arrested, and he never was, and like I said, due to where it's all about racism, what, due to where, right here on video, April sixth, Captain, excuse me, Director JT Miller answered the question when Carlos said, ooh, will you please show the three faces of the gentleman that, with the, with the shetty? What did he get up and do? Oh, we do not show anyone's faces, but wow, April ninth, Chuck O'Donnell, JT Miller, wow, you put up letters on Facebook, on media, saying that my nephew was arrested, and he wasn't? Like I said, I will say it in my prayers, and I, am I ashamed to say, I tell you, each one of you racists, you will have your day. Keep, keep coming at me, why, because the, the, the public loves me, because I speak the truth, I do the right thing, you're trying to make me look bad? Please, like I said, I will say it in my prayers, that Director Miller, Chuck O'Donnell, Suzanne Secora Ludwig, Mr. Shamy, Mayor Cahill, Caputo, and now, believe me, like I said, plenty of you other, I, I'm really beginning to think, you, you're, you're supporting it too as well, Mr. Anderson, which really hurts, but like I said, Chuck O'Donnell, I never did anything to disrespect you in my life, we were friends, we were friends, and like I said, the same way it touched my heart, it's going to get your heart ten times more, where you're going to feel the pain, you and Director JT Miller, to ruin my, try to ruin my family, what, to keep bringing up charges, dropping them, sending them to anger management, my family's not doing nothing wrong, if you think you're going to scare me, like I said, you're messing with the wrong black woman, because I tell you, and I will say it again, every evil eye towards me has their day, and I tell you, each one of you racists, the Lord will be coming for, and like I said, I, I, I don't like even coming to this meeting, due to where I see we have council members who support racism with New Brunswick Police Department, wow, you put out the, the homeless people from Pittman Park, because they're black, but wow, will you put the homeless out from over on Harvey? Like I said, if you stop judging people by the color of their skin, follow the law, New Brunswick would be a better place. And do I have, and do I have evidence on everything I'm saying? Wow, I say you have people in the park after hours, do they give them tickets? Have your day.
Ms. O'Donnell, please make sure the particular language of the threats again are in the minutes for the next meeting, I'd like them reflected.
Do we know that?
Thank you. I'll have the next speaker, please.
Are you still saying that I threat, that is not a threat?
I'll have the next speaker, please.
Goodbye.
Hello, everyone, my name is Grayson Janito, I'm a current Rutgers student, attending my junior year, an environmental activist with the NJ Perg students. NJ Perg is a student-based nonprofit at Rutgers, working to protect our environment and turn out the youth vote. We've been organizing in the state for over fifty years, I am the campaign coordinator for our Save the Bees campaign, but overall, I'm a concerned resident of New Brunswick. Today, we are asking New Brunswick City Council to consider our resolution to make New Brunswick Bee-friendly. I know a lot of you are probably sitting here thinking to yourselves, why are we talking about bees, and why would we even care? But quite frankly, I don't have enough time to stand up here and tell you how important bees actually are to our everyday lives and our society. To start, our mornings would no longer start with a cup of coffee and end with most of our favorite desserts, and as some of you already know, bees contribute to seventy-five percent of our food source, but in, in New Jersey alone, reported last year, over half of our bee colonies collapsed. The bees are dying because of climate change, habitat loss, and pesticides. Bees are necessary for our survival, so we're calling on you, the New Brunswick City Council, and Mayor Cahill, to pass a resolution to declare New Brunswick a bee-friendly city. New Brunswick, New Brunswick is full of amazing residents that deserve fresh fruits and vegetables, an abundance of plants and greenery on our sidewalks. Animals that eat the plants and bees, and the animals that eat those plants will eventually die off and work its way up to our ecosystem, resulting in a lack of food for us. The environmental movement is on the go, and we wouldn't want New Brunswick to miss out on such a prominent opportunity to take a step in the green direction. We've already collected over nine hundred petitions in support over the past two and a half weeks, just today, got a dozen, over a dozen students to sign our banner, sharing why they would personally, why they personally love bees. We have copies with us today, available if anyone would like to see them, and we would love to set up an individual meeting to discuss next steps. Thank you so much for your time, so again, I encourage you all to join the fight for bees and help us make New Brunswick bee-friendly.
Thank you, and I know we have those some of the bee colonies, can you please give the resolution to the clerk?
Yes.
So that the council can look at it, thank you. I'll have the next speaker, please.
I'll be right.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Tian Ying Yan, I'm a senior mathematics major at Rutgers and an intern on the NJ Perg Save the Bees campaign. This is my very first time speaking at a city council meeting, so I'm really thankful for the opportunity to get to do this. I joined this campaign because I care about the environment, and as a Chinese citizen, I'd like to tell you a story about how pesticides hurt the people in my country. You might have heard about the great Chinese famine between nineteen fifty-nine and nineteen sixty-one, but what's probably unknown to you is that one of the reasons for this famine was caused by a pest eradication campaign. Pesticides and poisons were used to eliminate pests, but those pesticides also created an ecological imbalance which exacerbated the great Chinese famine. Now, we are fortunately not on the verge of famine in New Brunswick, but this tragedy is a lesson for all of us, that we cannot let our human arrogance turn out to destroy ourselves. The city has already started to take steps to protect pollinators, like starting the first pollinator garden last year, but our resolution gives the city an opportunity to do more, and lead on protecting pollinators across the state. Like Grace mentioned, we have copies of our resolution today, and are happy to provide more information. Young people across our city are excited to take action on this, and we hope you are too. Thank you very much.
Thank you, please see copies of your resolution as well with the city.
Yes.
I'll have the next speaker, please.
Yes, good evening, my name is Mr. Ford.
Yes, good evening, uh, my name is Mr. Fokes. Excuse me, I'm, uh, here today to speak about, uh, issue that's, uh, I guess prominent in New Brunswick, which is homelessness and which I'm current D M. And, um, I want to speak about issues about programs that's already established in New Brunswick to assist the homeless. However, these programs are, uh, not equipped or lacking or failing. Certain issues such as a simple shower, you know, are becoming difficult and, uh, issues. They have, um, two that I know of in New Brunswick. One is on a Bill Street that I'm being told is non-existent, there's no showers there. And another one is, uh, the dignity center, which is, uh, they take showers twice a week. I would question that, I would question that due to the fact that's not dignity if you're only able to take showers two times a week in New Brunswick, which is the capital of Middlesex County. I don't understand that. There should be a central location for men separate from women and children that's able to go do these things to give them dignity, opposed to putting a name on something and that's inadequate or lacking. And I'm looking to see, um, who, uh, can I, uh, connect with, uh, dialogue with as far as, um, solutions. Whereas though in the capital of Middlesex County, we don't have that issue as far as showers for people that's homeless, as far as connecting the services to use phones, computers, things of that nature to, uh, I guess, uh, reconnect in society, you know, to be a positive part of society, you know, and I see that lacking. And, you know, I'm questioning as to why in this day and time it shouldn't be. There should be a central place where men can go, women and children can go with their homeless to take care of these basic essential needs. It might not be a big issue to everyone in here because, you know, I mean, I'm not jumping out there, but seems like people in here have a place to go sleep, um, eat hot food, basic essentials, you know? What about the people that do not? And I'm not speaking about people that don't want to simply do nothing and is comfortable living in the streets. I'm talking about the ones that want to change their situation. That's what I'm speaking on and it's not there. And I want to know who can I contact that is to come up with some solutions so we can look into that.
Mr. Jones, would you like to speak on that?
Yeah, I have a conversation with a brother outside. I'd be more than welcome to have a conversation with you after the meeting. We can find some resources for you.
Okay, um, that would be good. I would be looking for resource, but the resources that I, like I called two-on-one and I believe I exhausted the resources in New Brunswick, let alone Middlesex County, because I have to travel on two buses just to take a shower and per, and boy.
Mr. Jones will be able to help him after the meeting and tell him your particulars and he'll be able to tell you what we can do there.
Okay, but moving forward, I'm looking at the work on solutions.
Yeah, yeah, for public clarity, so while the, I mean, you spoke to it about the city being the county seat, but we are the county seat. Most of the programming in terms of homelessness and coordinated services are either ran by nonprofit agencies or county agencies. So while it is in New Brunswick, most of these organizations run the operation, even the shower on the Bill Street is ran by a small nonprofit. So what the city government provides are certain emergency, uh, programs, housing, and the dignity center. There are other avenues that I know you and I have seen or participated in that are facilitated by other organization or other bodies. So I can help navigate that, if we could also be able to apply pressure, move me to apply pressure. But I want to have a deeper conversation with you about the distinction between the two so we can figure out where the gaps are and figure out we make that for, not only you, but everybody else.
Okay, I just want to say at this point now, you're lacking to get with you for further.
I don't see me nothing.
But I'm not speaking just for myself, you know, there's other people that's not here that would utilize them services as well, that I'm speaking for as well that they're not here. Should be or not. But moving forward, I would like to speak to you, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. I'll have the next speaker, please.
Brittany Richardson, unfortunately, the sanitation driver for the Department of Public Wastings in New Brunswick, I just want to say thank you for absolutely nothing. What you said today was completely incorrect. The investigator that I guess you guys paid to not do anything in the situation with the harassment and the discrimination and the hostile work environment that goes on down in, um, the city that I work for, the city that I live in, the city of New Brunswick, you guys have done absolutely nothing. I spoke to your investigator once and she didn't say anything. But if there's any way I can show you recordings and videos of, um, proof of the harassment, I'm pretty sure half of your staff you would have to fire. You know, you guys don't, you haven't done anything and it's starting to get repetitive and I don't want to waste anybody else's time that need to speak. But it's the same thing every week, you guys haven't done anything. Yes, you, you're bringing up air conditioners when the summer is pretty much almost over. School is in full bloom and back in session. The garbage trucks need to be, you guys need to sit down and have a better plan for, for how they're going to move through the city because it gives the school bus and the students a hard time when we're trying to pick up garbage. They're trying to drop off their students, students are crossing the street, not only the smaller students, we have the Rutgers students. We're picking up off-campus Rutgers garbage, we don't get compensated for it. Another thing is for the homeless, you guys send us out to pick up homeless people's garbage, their feces, whatever they have in their little area. You guys don't give them any type of resources. You just tell the garbage company to go and clean up their garbage before they come back to their little area, cardboard, beds, whatever, and then you tell us to throw everything out. So you guys don't have any solutions to anything. You did not, you did not investigate anything. Domestic, excuse me, not domestic. Discrimination, harassment, hostile work environment goes on at this company every day. You guys do nothing but hide things. You're trying to come down to the company and fix tiny little things to make it seem like you're doing your job to cover up what you already have not covered up. Because it shouldn't have taken for somebody like me to come down here to say something to you in order for us to have an air conditioner and throughout the whole summer, but you're just now putting an air conditioner, which is in one truck, at the end of the summer. They have fans. What is fans going to do in a truck that collects heat? And it runs and makes more heat, like it's, it's just that simple. The, the garbage that you said is incorrect. We pick up way more garbage and we don't, we do not get paid for it. You guys have illegally gotten rid of, um, medical hospital supplies and things like that in the garbage and the landfill, which I also have videos and pictures of that as well to prove because you guys try to make it seem like we're liars. So that's why I started to take pictures and record everything because you guys are making it seem like you're doing something and you're not. So thank you for absolutely nothing. It continues to go on every day and I feel like it's going to take something drastic to happen in order for you guys to see that you're going to have to make necessary changes at that company. We work for the city, we, we live in the city and we, we wanted to be a part of something positive, which is keeping the city clean and we don't even get a thank you. We got a water fountain. You don't drink out of a water fountain, you have a water bottle. Everybody up here has water bottles and canisters. Why would we get a water fountain? You're saying it's filtered, who cares? You, you're not going to come down there and drink it. I, I'm just, I'm just not understanding, we're still using trucks from thirty years ago. There's guys that have been at this job for thirty years and they're saying these are the same exact equipment. There has not been any upgrades, nothing, other than a fan. There's garbage shooting out of it or whatever, but you keep the best trucks for the, for Dewey Drive and Rutgers Village. The inner cities do not get the good trucks to work from, they're getting the garbage that's leaking in the streets, leaking in their water system. And it, it's just, thank you for nothing. You did absolutely nothing and I'm pretty sure you probably paid the investigator to be on your side because she did nothing, did absolutely nothing. It's going to take something drastic for y'all to do something different. It's just a shame that you could work for the city and they could care less about you.
I'll have the next speaker, please. Are there any more speakers? I see none.
Move to adjournments.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan? Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council President Secora Ludwig?